Next order of business, I don't know what order, but the next order of business is going to be after a bit of a delay.
Yes.
Welcome in the new year. Laura Andrews will be presenting to us the financial audit statements.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to just start with the financial statements themselves. As I've done in the past, to go through the, you know, and present the highlights to the board. Again, if drafts were provided, they were reviewed by management, the mayor. Any comments were provided back to us and we incorporated those comments into these finals. So, management and mayor have had a chance to review, however, we, you know, do to, you know, some of the delays and turnover in personnel. Usually I would meet with the mayor to review the drafts, but that just didn't work out this year. And hopefully, we can get that back on schedule again with Marcia here, you know, this coming year then. So with that, financial statements are for the audit for the village's year-end, May 31st, 2019. We issued what we call an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the governmental activities and the business-type activities of the village, which is the village's sewer fund. In the current year, there, and we've talked about this in the last couple of years, is there was an implementation of a new standard, GASB statement number 75, related to other post-employment benefit obligations. And we do have an emphasis of that matter in our independent auditor's report. A couple of things to note, that as a result of this statement being implemented in the current year, there would be a restatement of net position for both the governmental activities, which is the majority of that, the general fund of the village, and the sewer fund. And there are some significant changes in the note disclosures related to the village's other post-employment benefits, which are on page 24 of the footnotes. And we'll kind of just go through those, but probably the most significant change that relates to 75 is that under 45, the previous standard, that the other post-employment benefit liability was being amortized over a 30-year period. What 75 does is it says that amortization is gone and they have, you know, the village had to have a new valuation performed as of May 31st, 2019. So that entire liability is now presented on these financial statements. For the general fund, because it's a governmental fund, really no change related to the general fund itself and the fund balance and those reports that the board would be looking at on a monthly basis and that you would be budgeting for. In the general fund, that entire liability is being reported in the government-wide statements. So, no impact really in what you would see in the general fund. For the sewer fund, because it is a business-type activity, whatever would be allocated to employees, that there are other post-employment benefits, there would be an allocation of that liability to the sewer fund. So, that's a little bit about what 75 is going to, or did impact the financial statements for 53119. The other thing is, is that the village was only required to have a valuation for this liability every three years. And now, what's going to happen is you have to have a valuation, a full valuation, every other year. And in the interim year, you have to have an interim valuation. The reason is, is that the calculations, and it relates to deferred outflows and inflows related to other post-employment benefits. The calculation has become quite difficult under 75, and therefore, you know, you do need to have an interim valuation. The only, you know, good thing about it is the interim valuation should be less in cost than what a full valuation would be. But again, that's something that you'll have to speak to the actuarial about and, you know, get a price quote on that. But, so that's really the big, the big news for the financial statements for 53119 is that standard. So, onto the financial statements themselves. Pages three and four are what we call the government-wide financial statements. They list all the activities of the governmental activities and the business-type activities, which is the sewer fund. And these statements incorporate all of the activity. That includes any capital assets, net of depreciation, any long-term liabilities, such as bonds payable, compensated absences, and as we spoke about, other post-employment benefits. So, that's what this, you know, these two statements are. They're presenting the village in total and all the activity that relates to the village. Not unusual that you would see that the unrestricted net position is now in a negative net position. You know, probably, I would say, for the majority of our municipalities, once 75 was implemented, because you have a significant liability that's coming onto these statements, we saw a lot of municipalities that, for the governmental activities and even the business-type activities, that this unrestricted number went into a deficit position. So, I would just say, don't be alarmed about it, because it's the government-wide statements that doesn't really impact your general fund, but just know that that's very typical, what we were seeing across the board with municipalities, you know, when they implemented 75. On page, so that's a state, the page three is a statement of net position. On page four is the other government-wide statement, which is the statement of activities. What this presents is all of the expenses for the governmental activities by function or program, and the program revenues of, you know, what part of this is to show is that it's showing that the governmental activities, here are the expenses, here are the program revenues that relate to those particular functions, and then this is the net expense or revenue of those particular functions, which the majority of those are then covered by what we call general revenues. They don't relate to any particular function. They're typically your sales tax, mortgage tax, and real property taxes. And down at the bottom, you can see we have net position, deficit beginning as restated, and we refer to note five. And note five, in the footnotes to the financial statement, is the note that has the restatement of the net position for the implementation of GASB number 75. Then on page five, we start what we call the fund basis statements. Page five is the governmental funds, and for the village, they consist of the general fund, the capital projects fund, which the majority of the activity in capital projects fund for 2019 was North Avenue project, and then the non-major Parks and Recreation Fund. The general fund ended the year with a little over 1.5 million of fund balance. Non-spendable amount of that, you know, really relates to amounts that are due from the sewer fund as a due from other funds. And the unassigned fund balance, which is the amount that you as the board have the opportunity to use any way that you choose, ended up with about $480,000 balance. Now, when we look at that compared to the current year expenditures, that's kind of about the only benchmark that we can utilize, because it's a governmental, you know, it's a government, it's a governmental fund. That number represents about 17%. So, you're right in the mix of where you should be. You know, state comptroller's office is not going to say, you know, here's the number that you have to have, but somewhere between that 10 and 25% is, you know, and again, this is determined by you as the board, what you deem as reasonable of what that unassigned percentage would be. But, as kind of a benchmark, between 10 and 25% is a typical benchmark to be looking at for that. And again, the capital projects, that activity, once North Avenue is completed, capital projects will be closed out, and you'll move on to the next capital project. Which I hear that that may be happening, right? So, on the next page is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. And you can see, before transfers out, the general fund actually had a small surplus, a little over $15,000 in the current year. But there was a transfer out of about $300,000, and that was a decision made by the board to transfer money from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the village's share for the North Avenue project. So that's reflected in that transfer out, and you can see that that transfer out is equal to the transfer in over in the capital projects column. But, so overall, if you took out those transfers, we have some, we have a small inter-fund transfer in for some contributions that are, was made to the general fund from the Parks Fund. So, you know, the general fund ended with a small surplus then of 15,000 plus the 8,000 coming in from Parks, so about 23,000. You know, still, fund balances are healthy. The only concern that I would say is the amount of money that is owed from the sewer fund to the general fund, that, you know, 569,000. On page eight is the statement of net position for what we call the enterprise fund, which is the village's sewer fund. So you can see, we have assets, we have capital assets, which, you know, you would typically think in a business-type activity like this, capital assets, assets are going to be your biggest component of this statement of net position. A lot of infrastructure, a lot of buildings, machinery, equipment. Current liabilities were 681,000. The majority of that 681,000 is 569,000 that is owed to the general fund. And then you have serial bonds payable, you have compensated absences. You could see the sewer fund share of the post-employment benefit applications is a little over $1 million. And then we have the sewer fund share of the New York State net pension liability, which is about 80,000. Springs us down to the net investment in capital assets. This is your capital assets, less depreciation, less any debt, general, you know, obligation debt, serial bonds, loans, that would relate to the capital assets in the sewer fund. And that's about 633,000. And then we have an unrestricted deficit of about 1.7 million. Again, I would say that, but in the sewer fund's case, yes, there is this issue with the, you know, the allocation of the post-employment obligations related to the implementation of 75. However, the sewer fund has been running a deficit, and that has been borne out in that the funds have had to have been borrowed from the general fund for operational purposes. The next page is the statement of revenues and expenses and changes in net position. You can see in the current year, there's an operating loss of about 228,000. There are interest earnings, and there's the special assessment, which isn't part of the operations, but that special assessment was 141,000. That brought the actual loss down to 117,000 at the end of the year. And the next page is the cash flows for the sewer fund. I'd say one of the things that, you know, I'd like to point out is that we, typically, we look at the very top section, which is the cash flows from operating activities. And we say, okay, if that's a positive, that's at least an assurance to you as the board that the operations are generating enough cash to cover, you know, cash in, cash out. In this case, the sewer fund, the, there's a net cash used by operations of about 41,000. Now, you can net that against the next section down, includes the special assessments. So, if you really looked at that, the net cash in would be 100,000. But you also had to have 60,000 in inter-fund loans, which is loans from the general fund, influx of cash to pay bills, because you had, you know, you paid out cash for acquisition and construction of capital assets, you had principal payments on debt, and you had interest on debt. The total of all of those was a little over 200,000. So, I always like to look at this statement. To me, in a business-type activity, this is the best statement, because that shows you, here's the cash in, cash out. Here's the cash at the beginning of the year, here's the cash at the end of the year. So you can see, you know, in this case, yes, if you add in the special assessment, the operations are generating a positive cash flow of 100. But, you also have debt service, principal and interest, that is basically eating into that, and not leaving you a lot of cash to go ahead and do your acquisition and construction of capital assets that you need to do. The next page is just the agency fund. It's really just assets and liabilities, that's only about 14,000. And then the footnotes to the financial statements, I would just like to look at those couple that we, that I mentioned regarding the OPEB, which is, starts on page 24. And that's the, what they've done in, as far as this statement, 75, is, if you're familiar with last year and looking at the pension note from the New York State Employees Retirement System, that a lot of the kind of information that is being presented here appears more like the pension note. So, there's a lot of information in here now, talking about who's covered in the village's plan, what the actuarial assumptions are related to the plan, what the changes in that OPEB liability are from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, looking at those assumptions and saying, you know, if there was a change in the discount rate, if there was a change in the healthcare cost trend rate, either up or down, this is how it would impact that liability that the village has. There are some deferred inflows and outflows now related to OPEB, like there are with the pension liability or with the pension system. So, I would just say, you know, you could take a read through that, you don't have to thoroughly understand it, but you can at least see that here are the assumptions that the actuary is putting out there. Here is how that liability could change. And the caveat here is that the village really has no possible way to even start funding this liability, because the legislation has not been passed in New York State to allow municipalities to actually establish trust funds to start funding this liability. So, it's out there, it's on your government-wide statements, it is what it is, and that's pretty much the way that you have to look at it, until New York State passes that legislation to allow municipalities to fund that liability. And then the last note that I wanted to look at was just on page 32, and that's the restatement of net position. So it just shows, this note shows the net position at the beginning, at the beginning of the year previously, before the implementation of 75, and then what the net position is after the implementation of 75. And you could see that the beginning plan liability under statement 75 was a little over 3 million, and the net position, net position actually went down from 5.6 million to about 3 million for the governmental activities, and a net position deficit in the sewer fund of about 39,000 to about 983,000 deficit. So, that's what that, that, putting that liability and implementing that statement, I mean, we were really only probably eight years, I think, into the 30-year amortization. So there was a significant liability for all municipalities that have other post-employment benefits, significant liability that was coming on to the governmental financial statements with the implementation of this, this standard. And then the rest of this, the information back here is just required supplementary information related to the pensions, related to the other post-employment benefits, and the general fund, original budget, modified budget versus actual. Any, any questions? Management report, which is the second report we have here. This includes pages one and two are just our required communications to you as the, as the governing board. We didn't encounter, I mean, the difficulty we encountered, and hence why we're here this late in the season, when we're usually here in October, is obviously a changeover in personnel, and the critical position of the village treasurer, and, you know, getting, gathering information, getting information and getting information supplied to us so that we could have the supporting documentation that we needed for the audit, and finding that information and getting the books closed out for the year-ending May. So, that was, you know, the difficulty that, that we encountered. Pages three and four are what we call our significant, summary of significant estimates that are included in the financial statements. Pages five and six are recorded audit adjustments. As you can see, there's some significant adjustments here that had to be made from the original trial balances that were provided to us. I anticipate that that will be much less this, this next year. And we had one, we didn't have any current year uncorrected misstatements. The only thing that was, was a reversal of a prior year uncorrected. That just means it was an immaterial amount, we have to present it here to the governing board. However, we could pass on it because it was, in the prior year, it was only $14,000. There are some new standards that are coming up. I don't expect any of them to have any real significance like 75 or any of these ones coming up, so I'm not really too concerned about that. And then we have our communication, and, you know, unfortunately, due to the significance of those audit adjustments, and, you know, the number of audit adjustments, the dollar amount of the adjustments, we had to report in this year a material weakness related to the village's financial accounting and reporting. I would anticipate that this material weakness will be addressed and should be addressed, and that we would not have this in here for the management report for 53120. And the last piece is the representation letter that we provided at the conclusion of the audit. Typically, the village treasurer would sign that, but we, we made the mayor put his signature on it this year, because didn't feel that it was right that, you know, Marcia would be, would be signing this in, you know, since this all relates to a year that was, she was not even here. So, so that's, that's the last piece of this document. Any questions?
Is there a timeframe in which the, the loan from the sewer fund to the, or the general fund or the sewer fund needs to be paid back?
Technically, it's supposed to be paid back by the end of the fiscal year. This, this is something that I think the board-
So at some point, is the comptroller's office going to come and swipe somebody's money?
Well, I could say this, that, you know, that the, when the AUD gets submitted, the annual update document gets submitted to New York State, I have had a couple of, for ones that we prepare for clients, I've had the state comptroller's office send me emails back with some various questions, and a couple of times I've seen questions that say, have you considered that, you know, these are, you know, if they're, you know, current or that they're going to be addressed? But we kind of tried to address that, Don, in saying that we've set aside a piece of the general fund fund balance in that non-spendable category for the amount of those loans, or, you know, loans that have occurred over the period of a couple of years, and said, this piece is then set aside in the general fund. I think if the state comptroller's office sees that, what that indicates to them is at least you've been proactive and you've said, you know, there's a possibility that this won't be paid back. So therefore, what's going to happen is that that would be a reduction in the general fund fund balance. So, but I, I would like the board to think about and come up with maybe some kind of a schedule of, you know, a repayment schedule, you know, even if it's something, you know, 10, $15,000 a year to, but, that's a little hard to do when you still have to currently be borrowing money for operational purposes.
Yeah, I think when they divided it out, they, they just put the excess into the general fund, when they divided the sewer and the general, they didn't put anything in to help them like we have for the general, they just put it all over the general. And I think that's part of it, and somehow it's got to go back. And then we lost huge amounts of revenue from the sludge and everything else that we were doing to that facility, so, yeah, we've got to-
Yeah. Some work to do there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, working on it.
I heard you Jake.
Yeah, there's a question up there, is when the sewer department separated, now it became a separate fund, you know, obviously, the sewer department, the last 80 years contributed to the fund balance that the village general governmental operations enjoys now, is some of that fund balance, because sewer either over-realized revenue or under-respent the expenses, and that went into the fund balance. When it separated out to its own fund, the sewer didn't get assigned any of that fund balance, no portion of it, so.
I, I think that, you know, this is, this is something that the board needs to discuss, Jake, and say, okay, of that 569,000 that is currently owed by the sewer to the general, how much are we, how much are we willing to say that's- to the general, how much are we, how much are we willing to say, that's okay, sewer, that's, that's the general fund's contribution to this fund to start that fund? I think that's a, and then you have to say, is it all of it? Is it half of it? Is it 300,000 of it? How much of it is? And then whatever is left, you need to have a discussion about a repayment schedule. Oh, thank you so much.